We're ready.
Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council, January 11th, 2023, 11:00 after 6:00. And we're here in City Council Chambers at 345 High Street in Hamilton. We do have six public hearings this evening involving community development block grants, zoning around Baden High School, one of Baden High School, zoning changes, a new Gold Star, Third Eye Blind final plan, as well as Timber Hill Drive development. So, roll call, please. Pullman?
Present.
Fear?
Present.
Vaughn?
Present.
Ryan?
Here.
Nab?
Present.
Lauer?
Present.
Moller?
Present.
We have the quorum. Thank you. We'll start off by offering a prayer by Vice Mayor Michael Ryan, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
As we begin a new year, may God's blessings shower you and bestow upon each of you a bright, healthy, and peaceful new year. Let us live each day in the most loving ways, the God-conscious ways. Let us serve all who are in need, regardless of race, color, or creed. And Lord, continue to guide our city, our city council, and our management teams. Continue to protect our police officers and our firefighters and keep them out of harm's way. And continue to bless our city, our state, and our wonderful country, and lead our Bengals to victory on Sunday, Houday, and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for that unique prayer, Vice Mayor Ryan. I didn't get the notice about the orange ties tonight, so I forgot. Okay, let's go to special presentations. We have Hamilton hometown heroes presented by Chris Haynes.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. Mayor Moller, members of council, city manager.
That's a remote for you if you want.
You can do it for me. That's all right. Again, Chris Haynes here, an employee here with the city of Hamilton, also a committee member on the City of Hamilton Veterans Hall of Fame. So I want to talk about a new program we're going to launch here tonight, or this evening anyways. And just over a month or so ago, this council recognized November as Veterans Month here in the city of Hamilton. And shortly after our City of Hamilton Veterans Hall of Fame induction, we began to discuss other ways to recognize Hamiltonians who have served in the armed forces. Many cities and towns you drive through have started their own hometown heroes banner programs, and we thought it was time Hamilton did the same. This was also an idea that Matt Wilson and his students at Garfield Middle School had as well. So the Veterans Hall of Fame Committee enlisted the help of Matt, Jack Whalen, Jessica Harp, who's here, Tommy Long from Lemon Grenade, and to come up with a program and a design. So the motto of the program would be to establish a joint, it's a joint project established by the city of Hamilton, the Hamilton Veterans Hall of Fame, the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce, the Hamilton Community Foundation, to recognize and pay tribute to our military, service personnel, and veterans. And honors current and former residents who served, are serving, who have given their life for their country as a member of the United States Armed Services. So with Tommy's help, the banner was designed. And look closely at this picture. He's one of us, many, many moons ago. And if you recognize that as Mr. Jim Williams, our Public Works Director, that goes back a few days. So he was our model for this program and the banner design. So we wanted to keep it local, from the design to the printing, even to our model. So, Jim, we thank you for that picture. I know I have it coming to me, so we'll be okay with that. So as you see in the banner, we will identify the service member, their rank, years of service, branch of service. But also realize, you know, this is open to members of the community to submit their loved ones that they're proud of, who served in the armed forces. But when you do submit this, we ask for a high-resolution photo or the best that we can, because when these pictures are enlarged, you know, we don't want to see a grainy picture out there. These banners will be hung on city-owned utility poles, light poles throughout the city. We're looking at starting with the B Street, Main Street area to begin with. These banners will be 30 inches by 60 inches, so they're large banners. But again, you know, this is for residents, members, organizations, to recognize military members, whether active-duty, veterans, or deceased, to show they're proud of their hometown heroes. And that's why we want to kick this program off tonight. There is a website that can be found through the Chamber of Commerce. It is live right now. Again, we kicked it off tonight. I believe the city of Hamilton, we will have it live on the city of Hamilton's website. We do have an email address that you can ask questions or anything, and that will go directly to Councilmember Nab, and he has actually supplied his phone number along with the address, so you see that there. We also have a QR code that was established if you want to make a donation to this program. If you don't have a loved one who served, but you want to assist others in getting a banner put up, this fund will be controlled or be held at the community foundation, so you can scan this QR code and make a donation to this program and, again, recognize and assist identifying our hometown heroes out there. Does anyone have any questions for me? Or Mayor, I know you're on the committee, Mr. Nab, you're on the committee, you want to make any comments?
I'm going to make a few comments if I could. Over the years, I've been contacted by several people about a banner program. Councilmember Fear brought it up to me, Councilmember Nab brought it up, John Whalen got involved. And this is a fast-moving, quality-product committee under your leadership. We've also got to thank the Colligan Fund, Michael J. Colligan Fund, Hamilton Community Foundation, who's actively involved in assisting us, Chamber of Commerce actively involved in assisting us. So this is truly a local project, and veterans lead it, and it's just a quality program.
And the one thing, not to cut you off, Mayor, but the one thing I would say, you know, I didn't identify the cost. The cost of the banners will be $150. We will display them on city-owned poles from May to November, you know, to recognize, get it displayed prior to Memorial Day and take them down after Veterans Day. Due to the winter conditions, we want to try to get them down throughout the wintertime so we don't damage these banners for the cost that they are. But again, they're $150. There's an application on the Chamber of Commerce website, and then we'll be on the city of Hamilton's website. But, you know, get those applications filled out, they'll come to us, we'll review them as a committee member, make sure all the pertinent information is there, get these banners made. The initial cutoff deadline for this year will be March 15 to get your applications in so that we can get the banners made and have them put up in the May timeframe. So that's what we're looking at.
Importantly, for all those of you in our interviewing audience, anyone here, all of the service organizations, the Butler County Veterans Commission, have all been notified, all been afforded the application. They have it online for you to be able, if you are a member of any of those organizations, please take advantage of your local post and local organization, veterans organization, to be able to join us in honoring our heroes. So please feel free to call me, use the application. All of the information that you should need is found in those two pages of application format that we've created. So again, if you have any questions, please email us at the email provided and/or call my cell phone. I'd be glad to answer any and all questions.
And we're going to meet weekly as this committee, just so we, you know, keep up on the applications coming in, make sure if an item is missing on an application, we reach out to that applicant and get that information in so we don't miss the opportunity to get a banner made this year. So again, appreciate the help from all the committee members and the organizations helping out. And this summer is going to be awesome to see a bunch of banners hanging up around the city of Hamilton, so it's going to look great. So thanks for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Chris, and of course, thanks, Tim and Jessica, Dan, Jim Williams as well. And looking forward to this program taking off and having banners in places where we normally haven't had banners. Nothing else, we'll move on to a Spooky Noook Sports update.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council, thank you for the opportunity to provide this update. We're talking with Joshua this morning, recapping last weekend, which was a pretty small event, but I think it led to large lines or waits at the restaurants throughout town. So I think a big part of the economic development component of Spooky Noook Sports will be realized, and it's going to be realized quicker than we expect, maybe. January is going to be a little slower than I would have liked. We, you know, I think the challenges on this job have been obvious to a lot of people. And the, you know, we faced multiple delays for a number of reasons. The COVID pandemic was one of them. We had a collapse, a structural collapse, and other delays that ultimately led to about a nine-month delay in delivery of the project to us. So in November, we had, you know, I won't go through last year's schedule, but if you recall, we had almost nine months of, from March through the end of the year was booked pretty well. But we, and we were able to move some of those into the new year. But even in November, we could not get a solid commitment to the flooring being finished in January. So it led to, really, the event for next weekend pulled out. We tried to rebuild it. We have about 1,000 people coming for a, it's a training event for volleyball players who, if you know volleyball tournaments, there's, say, there's three teams in a pool, one will be refereeing while the other two play, and they keep switching around. So this is a training session for those players. And the event grew pretty nicely, but certainly not to our normal Martin Luther King weekend standards. The event in Pennsylvania is significant as usual, and I think Rich Engel pointed out that it was seven years ago this weekend that the city first came to Pennsylvania to visit. On that weekend, we went up to the roof and watched the cars come, and it was, it is still as exciting as it ever was. But what I'd like to do tonight is just look at the schedule for the next couple of months, six months. And you can see in February, the dates on the left, four and five, those are weekend dates. So, look, there are things happening almost every evening. I left tonight, there might have been 75 or 80 cars there, so we've got volleyball, a number of different kinds of events. So we don't really focus on the weekday events, because that's not what impacts traffic or impacts the restaurants or other businesses in the city as much as the weekend business will. And so you can see in February, there's four weekends, pretty solid. And the second-to-last column is the team count. So you can see the 60-team tournament. Futsal will bring about 4,000 people into the building. The bigger one, the following weekend, 15,000, and so you can see going down the line what the sport is and how many people will be attending. So it grows pretty solidly in February, March, that first weekend in March will be probably our, well, that will be our largest, the first-largest weekend where we're going to have to manage traffic coming into town. And I don't know what to tell people about restaurants, you know? If last weekend, 2,200 people filled restaurants like it did, you know, we'll see people traveling further for restaurants or waiting longer. So over the next two or three months, people, businesses, and the people around Hamilton will begin to understand what it means when we talk about a large tournament coming into town and how that affects the traffic flow. So our goal is to fill the restaurants, and apologies to locals who might have to wait longer than they're accustomed to, but ultimately, that is, you know, a significant part of the project, is driving the economic development throughout the city in an ongoing basis. So I think Easter is the, no, Easter's a pretty solid weekend. You'll see the recruiting weekends, these are the ones that are pretty easy to grow. That's when we'll have college coaches here. So in Pennsylvania, we have multiple 300, 400, or 500-team weekends in what's called the live period. And that's when the college coaches are out looking at the players, and it's pretty restrictive. I think that's by the NCAA defines what weekends can be live. And they can really mess things up when they move a weekend. We don't know why they move it, but they move it, and it starts a whole series of events. But those are the weekends when you'll see the most serious athletes, the highest-performing high school athletes. They are definitely performing in a way that, you know, their goal is college sponsorship, so, sorry, scholarship. So moving on to May, June, and July, you'll see that those weekends stay pretty solid. I mean, those are, you know, we're pretty happy with those numbers for first year. These are, some of the organizers are people we've worked with in Pennsylvania, others have history in the Midwest, so, you know, we're very confident in their ability. These are contracted, we have significant deposits, so we're very confident in their ability to deliver these events. Starting in August, it'll slow down. In Pennsylvania, our experience was it took, you know, a couple of years to really build the fall dates. But that's why we put the focus on the event side, the hotel and convention center side, because as we go into the fall, we'll start depending on traffic on that side of the street a little more than the tournament, the sports side of the street. So we're pretty excited about it. I think I heard in the last 42, 48 or 72 hours, I think we had 25 requests for tours for potential weddings. So the business on the Riverside Mill 2 is coming along very nicely, a couple of big events. So we, you know, we've got some work to go, some work to do yet, but we're ready for these weekends and looking forward to them. So that's the extent of my update. If you have questions or comments, I'm happy to respond to those.
See a lot of March through July basketball madness going on.
Yeah.
That's a lot of basketball, a lot of players, a lot of teams, a lot of people visiting our city. That's absolutely amazing.
It was interesting in Pennsylvania, because we really built there. My interest or experience was with wild volleyball, and we expected that to be our leading sports, sporting event. Ends up basketball is larger for us, and they, they're good spenders, so I think people in the city will feel it. It'll be good.
Sam, based on these initial numbers, do you have an idea of where people are coming from, states, how far out, and?
I don't. I think we will, I don't know if we'll know that in advance of the tournaments, although we should be able to find that out. As we approach that first but large one, we'll pursue that to make sure we can take at least a guesstimate on what direction they'll be coming from and which traffic light should stay green a little bit longer.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor? Please.
Sam, I want to thank you. My wife's actually the coordinator for Special Olympics, and we're excited to, usually we have it down in Cincinnati, scattered all over the place, so we're real excited to have it here locally and host Cincinnati, and, you know, it's pretty close to my heart, so I'm excited to see it.
Good.
I haven't been in it since we've got the basketball courts done, so I need to.
Oh, yeah. Way too, the hardwood is, it's amazing. I mean, it's really almost two acres of hardwood. It's crazy.
So I appreciate that. That's going to be exciting, so, thank you.
One final comment, if I may. Our, you know, our experience with the city has just been terrific. And department after department, I think, performs to the standard that Joshua had set quite a number of years ago, and I would say his expectations are being met. And so even when they say no, they say no very nicely. No, it's important, right? I mean, I understand they have a job to do. My job is to try to do it maybe a little faster or for a little less cost, and anytime that's possible, that's been supported, and when it's not, we always find a way forward. So my compliments to Joshua and the city team that I think just represents the city in such a positive way. It's something I've not experienced anywhere else before, so good job.
We've got a great city team, and we do get to yes, and that's our customer service and our professional service as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, have our engineering projects update with Rich Engel.
Daniel, I thought you were coming up with walk-up music.
It's, I find that's a bit more complicated than I realized.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens of Hamilton. Happy New Year. First update is engineering update, and related to what Mr. Byler was just talking about, the traffic signal system project, the priority intersections are now complete. They are collecting data, and we're looking at that data. Within the next week, we're going to start doing incremental changes to the traffic signals on the main corridor. Now, this is the high street from Hampshire Drive all the way to Eaton Avenue on Main Street, and then also on MLK North and South for a few traffic signals. So we will be doing that incrementally, and we'll do it once, let the data run some more for a couple of weeks, look at it again, make other incremental changes, let it run another couple of weeks, and then make what we hope to be final changes to the traffic signal. And then we'll be able to turn it over to the adaptive process, which, again, we will set high and low limits as to which these traffic signals can operate, and then they will adjust automatically as the traffic changes throughout the day. Now, we run different traffic programs. We run a morning program, a midday program, and an evening program, and each of those programs are going to be run differently. In the morning, most of the traffic is eastbound, so the traffic is preferred, the traffic signals are preferred eastbound. Midday is about the same in both directions, so they run equally midday, and then in the evening, the preferred signal system runs for westbound traffic. Any questions on that? Next is the Columbia Heights subdivision water main replacement project. I'm pleased to note that the water main is completely installed. All of the pressure and bacterial biological testing is complete, was completed earlier this month. All the water services have, on Terry Lane, Terry Court, Wildwood Court, and Ross Tail Drive are complete and connected onto the new water main. So the old HDPE water main is now out of service, and these folks are on a ducted iron pipe. I would like to publicly thank and compliment the staff members that worked hard on this project, especially getting the OPWC grant, Joey Rodenberg, Chad Brown, Alan Messer, Dan Arthur, Pat Yingling, Andy Flume, Tim Price, Steve Sands, Nathan Perry. They all contributed in getting the information together quickly and efficiently to submit it to OPWC and then obviously obtaining the grant. There's still a little bit of paving left to do, but we are working through that. We're going to do final paving now, even at a little higher cost, because again, we have grant funds available yet, and we're going to take advantage of that. And lastly, I'd like to thank Mike McNamie. He was the inspector on the job and was there constantly to make sure that the contractor was working and getting the project done properly. And this is the location of the water main and the project. Also, the, this came before council had a caucus report and a resolution that we were going to participate in a ODOT urban paving program on State Route 128. They are paving from somewhere down in Hamilton County. I can't find a clear definition of where the starting point is, but they're coming up into Butler County and into the city of Hamilton on Pyramid Hill Drive. They were paving only those portions where our boundary wanders in and out on the west side on Pyramid Hill Drive. They were paving only where there was a combined city of Hamilton and state route boundary. We're actually going to now participate with them and get the rest of Pyramid Hill Drive paved that's entirely in the city, and it'll be at a, like their normal urban paving program, it'll be approximately a 50-50 split between ODOT and the city. I'm working with them. I need to set up a conference call with them soon to establish if we can get the intersection of Pyramid Hill Drive, South B Street, New London, and Columbia Bridge paved as well. I'm hopeful we can, but that is a large intersection. We may need to do additional cost from the city to get that done, but I'm working with ODOT on that. And lastly, on the engineering, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, remember we were granted the ability to get the material of the RRFBs from ODOT. They sent us the material. Now, they sent it to us in pieces and parts in crates, so we have to assemble them, and it takes one of our signal shop technicians about a day to assemble one of these RRFBs. We've got foundations installed at the, those locations, New London Drive and West Fairway, Dayton Street and Fair Avenue, Dayton Street and Lockwood Avenue, Eaton Avenue and Sanders Drive. And we're assembling those devices and installing them as time permits. And actually, today, we installed and activated the RRFBs at New London Road and West Fairway Drive, so that pedestrian crossing is now protected by RRFBs. Any questions on engineering?
On behalf of the folks who live in Columbia, the Terry Lane area, thank you. That's a job so well done, and being responsive to the issue and quickly being responsive to the issue, so thank you.
Yes, it went very well. Train Depot update. So this is a photo of the two-story building on MLK. It was a very successful move. The mover was happy with how it went. I talked to them that afternoon, and they were pleased on how everything went. And for those who are interested, this building weighs approximately 220 tons. So they were able to share that with me, that, based on their calculations on their move. So right now, the masons are installing the cement concrete blocks to build up from the existing concrete foundation up to the bottom of the walls. This is a photo of the beams still in the wall. The wall needs to, after they get the wall set, the mortar needs to cure for 30 days because it'll be an immediate load once they bring the building down on top of the wall. So we have to make sure that it's completely cured and set. And typically, concrete at 28 days is about as strong as it's going to get, so that's why we're waiting 30 days before we load it, and then they can remove the beams from the two-story building. This is a photo inside the single-story building. They're using a little different main beam configuration here. If you notice, there's holes in the beam itself, and the cross members are going to go through those holes. And actually, the building is up on wheels now and ready to move. And this is a photo outside where we haven't, at that time, when I took the photo earlier this week, they hadn't removed the brick yet to start the reclamation of the brick. So this slide was done yesterday, and tentative moving date is Tuesday, January 17 at 9:00 a.m. It's actually firm date now. I talked to the movers today, and that will be firm unless something unknown happens at the moment. Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
We now go into the audience of citizens, individuals wishing to make comments. They may comment during this part of the agenda, or may reserve the right to speak specifically when an item is up for vote on the council floor. All individuals who wish to address council are required to sign this blue public speaker book that I have, and each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. We have one person who signed up this evening, Dan Hancock.
I want to say Happy New Year to the council people, and I want to thank whoever put the inserts into electric fuel in the. inserts into electric fuel in that, about the upcoming meeting there that we're going to have on January the 23rd. And also, I'd like to invite all of city council to the meeting, not just a couple of them, but everybody. And the people of the area there are a little unhappy with city council. They think that city council is not listening to them and they don't want to listen to them. So they'd like for you all to come to the meeting there and voice their concerns and hear from them personally how they feel about the North Hamilton Crossing and their neighborhood in general. And from that standpoint, like I said, it's a big problem with communication that, and they feel that you're not talking to them and they're not able to talk back to you guys and have their, what's going on. The other thing is, is that the North Hamilton Crossing going from, one of the plans is to go across from the end of Northwest Washington Boulevard on a cross over to 127. There's no houses, there's no things in the way in that except for the city applying for a grant to go ahead and access to build the bridge and get the traffic off of the Black Street Bridge and to route it over from 127 over to the B Street and Northwest Washington Boulevard. And the, all they have to do is apply for the grant and that way we'll be able to shut down the Black Street Bridge and turn it into a pedestrian bridge, and that'll make a better traffic flow for the city and the people who live in, over on the west side and also for any truck traffic in that. The other concern is, is that for over 100 years now, back at 1923, the city council at that time had made plans to put a bypass around the city of Hamilton on the west side. And the fathers back then on city council had made plans and, and drawings of how they wanted the, the road to go in that. And the South Hamilton Crossing only took 30 years to go from conception to final being done. And like I said, we're here at 120 years and the ground hasn't even broken yet. So like I said, a lot of people would like to see that part of the phase one go ahead and get started because like I said, there's really nothing to do except for apply for the grants and go ahead and get the road done there. The other thing is, is that we brought up last year about the homeless people and about purchasing a bus and then having temporary housing for the homeless people, but it was brought up that the bus would cost over a quarter million dollars and it would cost a lot to maintain it and that. So that was nixed and the city says, well, we have a plan for the homeless people. Well, I'd like to form the city that we have a tent community now of homeless people in a city park. And the tent community is growing all the time and the city needs to visit and move the homeless people into shelters and especially this weekend, it's going to get cold here again and possibly snow. So we need to form some kind of plan here that was supposed to be in the works to get these people into housing and that, and now the tents. So, and I have some more, but that's all the time I have. So I'll go ahead and let you guys think about it and come up with some plans here, and I appreciate you listening to me.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Dan. Dan?
Yeah.
I'd like to, with all due respects, I just, I'm curious.
I'm just talking to your microphone while I'm hearing.
When you come up to the podium with these comments, do you discuss anything at all with anyone in the city before you come and say things? Because it really sounds kind of disrespectful.
Well, like I said, right here, the thing that the city put out, you know, and I'm going by that and also in the, also that's been put out in print there, that's what I'm going by, so.
But when you come up and say things.
Sure.
It, it does sound disrespectful to me.
Okay.
As if everyone, all the staff members aren't doing what they need to do. It's like you're saying things that they're hearing for the first time and they, they know about homeless camps, they know about South Hamilton Crossing and the routes. And so I just wish that before you would come up and say some things, that possibly you could talk to some staff member and really be sure that what you're questioning has not been considered already or has not been addressed. I know, I know that you care about the city and I know that you're coming up with the best of intentions, but I really think that you should show more respect to the city staff and talk to them ahead of time before you come and say some of this.
Well, this is just not my opinion, this is the opinion of the community there, and I'm just expressing that to you. And like I said, they would like to talk to you guys about their concerns, and like I said, they came out and, and messaged me that they feel that you guys are not listening to them. And I mean, I'm just, you know, bringing a message over to you so you can respond and say, hey, you know, we are listening to you and we are going to address your concerns and that. Because like I said, there's not just me, there's a ton of people that feel that way, and I don't quite feel that way. I feel that when I talk to you guys, you guys listen and you're willing to look into it and do what's got to be done. And with these homeless people, like I said, I'll take you and show you the, the tent community and that, that needs to be addressed because like I said, I hate, I've got a house and I'm proud that I have a house and someplace to live. These people don't have anything and like I said, you know.
You don't need to show us that. We, we, we know that. We have safety officers that are painfully aware of everything going on and we are trying to come up with a way to deal with it. So I, and, and as far as you being the messenger for a lot of people, and again, I respect you coming up, I know that you have the best of intentions, but we've gone through this, I mean, God bless Bob Harris. He comes up and he, he like speaks for whole communities and we have other area, we would like to talk to the people then.
Let me update you, Dan. Let me update you something that you may not know. Okay, first off, North End, we do care and we do listen, and you're going to listen to me for a second, if you just would, for a minute. We do care, we do listen. Many council members, you may not know this, you probably don't know this, are walking the North End area. Okay, Councilmember Nab and I did that Monday of this week. Others are lined up to walk the North End. So you just don't see eagle eye view photos. We're, we're walking the area, okay? We, and I think you did thank us for putting the notices in the utility bills. What you may not know is Joel Lauer is setting up a group of volunteers, young folks, folks councils, Asian alike, to walk and deliver flyers about that event at Fairwood Elementary. Okay? So we are doing a lot of things to make sure that there are, it's a good group of people there who, that we can listen to. And we need to listen, we need to exchange information, get the, the right timeline that we're on and not what people might think our timeline is or what our selections are. So there's still a lot to be discussed, a lot to be investigated about the North Hamilton Crossing. Know you care and I really appreciate your interest in all these things. Homeless issue is complex, it's deep, it involves mental health issues, and we are investigating that also. As far as warming centers, I know that when it starts, before it gets a little cold, people contact council. We contact Salvation Army, Sheriff's Department, other places. So we, we are being responsive and we're going to continue to be responsive to North Hamilton Crossing as well as being responsive the best we can in a very complex issue, which is the homeless issue.
Well, this people brought up to me yesterday and that, that's why I'm relaying it to you, you know. I believe in you guys and that, and I believe you wholeheartedly in that, but these people here are very skeptical, you know? And I'm glad you're putting forth, you know, what you're telling me and that, but I said, it's not just me, you gotta find some way to convey it to them.
We can go back and forth about this, but what I want you to do is, is those who contact you from the North End, tell them what we've talked about tonight, had them there Monday, January 23rd at Fairwood Elementary School, and that's the best thing you can do is deliver that message. So when, and we're, we're posting notice that all council members had the opportunity to be there because normally we can't do that due to special meetings rules and the like. But right now, we're going to post it that, that there's a chance that all seven of us will be there depending upon schedules. So, North End, I think a lot of folks know that we do care and they're going to see that the way we're responding to this special meeting, and as many as us who possibly can could be there on January 23rd will be there on January 23rd. Okay?
Well, I appreciate that and thanks for your comments and I took, I really appreciate it, and I hope that it gets more conveyed to these, these people so they can understand, you know, how you guys feel and, because like I said, really, they don't feel that, you know, that you're really concerned for them and that, but like I said, I believe in you guys and I believe that you want to, you know, be concerned and listen to what they have to say so we can address their problems and, and get together and solve it, you know? And hopefully it'll work out for everybody because I mean.
Let us listen.
But like I said, if you just show me who needs to be, right, I'll take them to the homeless people here and show them the encampment and it's on.
Please share what information you have with our professional city folks, okay?
Yes.
We gotta, we gotta keep moving on.
May I ask one more? Dan, do you ever put anything on 311? Or do you just, do you ever put anything on 311 or do you just wait for the meetings to come, to say things?
No, like I said, I've driven by this the past week here and that, and seen these people and there's more and more tents getting.
No, my question is, are 311.
Oh, 311.
Do you ever do anything on 311? Because that's.
Do I just dial 311 and that's it? Or do I have to dial some other numbers?
You and I are going to get together and I'm going to show you the magic of 311 on a computer. Because if you were to do, put a lot of this stuff on 311, you're, you're going to get the information to the city that you want to have and they will respond to you and let you know if you're on the mark or, or not or whatever. So you and I are going to get together and I'm going to teach you about 311, okay?
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
And we now go to the consent agenda, and that includes all staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, and received and filed information. As part of that, we're going to go into the committee of the whole. It's an opportunity for council to listen to some reports, ask questions, make comments in those reports. So I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be recessed and the committee of the whole take place. So moved. Second, must have made my councilmember Nab, second vice mayor Ryan, all in figure, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. The motion is carried at 6:45. We now go to committee of the whole. Please go through those items if you would. Mr. City Clerk.
Absolutely. So for our first presentation for this evening, this is a caucus report related to admitting the pay range of a classification in the resident services department. Our first presenter will be Adam Helms, the resident services department.
Good evening. We'll talk about reclassifying a position in the resident services department. A brief history, as long as quick as I can. 2016, we established the resident services department. At that time, that department was responsible for running golf courses, social media, the 311 system, special events, and then we did city-owned property maintenance and we created this five-person team called the Quick Strike Team. It's basically a rapid response team. At the time, we didn't have a function to go and pick up items that were illegally dumped. So the Quick Strike Team started out as four or five gentlemen with hand-me-down trucks in the broom closet of Potters Park. It's not a joke, that's where they worked. They went around town and took care of nuisance issues. The resident services supervisor at that time was responsible for staffing and managing the day-to-day operations of the Quick Strike Team. So just go, go over properties, pick up some, some items. 2019, city council made a strategic decision and initiative to invest in our neighborhoods. At that time, the city manager called me and said, I have a deal for you. I'm going to trade you golf courses, or I'm going to trade you trash and recycling and code enforcement, nuisance abatement for the golf courses. It's kind of a one-sided deal, but we love it. So now the strategic planning or the resident services department handles all of those things. Nuisance abatement, property maintenance, code enforcement, and administration, public nuisances, building rehabilitations, demolitions, refuse and recycling operations, special events, and city-owned property maintenance. We cut across a lot of different departments. The moral of the story here is the position that we created in 2016 to manage this looks nothing like it does today. And I'm, I'm going to jump into some quick numbers to give you a high-level overview of kind of what we're doing or what we did last year. This is hard to see, but these are the types of service requests we get. Councilmember Fear mentioned the 311 system, so these are service requests that come in via phone, email, 311, you name it. Last year, we received 4,700 of them. That's a 75% increase from when we started this in 2020 or like since we started the, the focus on, on neighborhoods. This is the type of work we are doing. A lot of it is trash collection. In the central business district, we collect trash, street cans and then on High Street and Main Street, three times a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We collect morning, noon, and night, nights and weekend, I mean, weekends too, no holiday breaks, they're down there. If there's an event coming uptown and, you know, trash is overflowing, we're there to help as well. This is what I'm, this is what I'm most proud of. These are the inspections that we've received or like our, our code enforcement officers go out and inspect properties. We received, they did 4,800 inspections last year. What I want to pay attention to is the decrease, the very bottom in blue, the number of inspections requiring Quick Strike Team abatement has decreased by 43% since 2020. That means that just by providing some level of accountability, we're out there conducting the inspections by holding the property owners accountable. If somebody just says, hey, you know, you need to fix that, 75, 65% of the time, they're going to do it. So I'm most proud of that. This is really hard to see, it doesn't fit well on the slide, but this is what the resident services department looks like now. If you'll note, there will be two resident services supervisors. You have one person overseeing essentially the labor and it's hard to see, but that breaks out to 20 full, 25 full-time equivalents. Most of those employees are seasonal, so it's upwards of managing and staffing 35, 30 to 35 people just, just for labor, and those aren't full-time employees. So remember, like those, it's seasonal. They'll work one year and then it's a new bunch coming in. So it's constant turnover, constant training, constant onboarding. On the other side, you'll see the other resident services supervisor, you know, those 4,500 inspections that I talked about, that means that 4,500 letters have to go out to notify the property owner. That also means we get 4,500 angry phone calls in return and somebody has to answer those phone calls, and that's what that other resident services supervisor does. That's Tammy Rose. She's responsible for customer service, the administration, the administrative function, and what I call the business operations. She's been spearheading our technology movement, which I will call open source code enforcement. Code enforcement cuts across so many different departments. We work with police, public works, you name it. And one of the things we've, we found when we were doing code enforcement is that it's, we can solve a lot of problems if people just have the information. So we are trying to make as much of our information available to different departments as possible, and Tammy Rose has been spearheading that. The reason I'm here today is to reclassify those positions, ask to reclassify those positions to bring their pay range to what it should be market-wise. We haven't adjusted it since we made this major transition. They've been working under their, under their pay for the past four years, three or four years. That's the extent of my report. Glad to answer any questions.
Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Please go ahead.
Adam, was your team went to the edge of Ledlow this, yesterday I believe, and cleaned up some trash that was dumped there? Am I correct on that?
Yeah, I would, I would venture a guess, yes. I don't know specifically, but probably.
That was done within 24 hours. I appreciate what your team does. I appreciate the job that Tammy Rose and Steve Maxwell do, and I appreciate your efforts and how you fight for your department. I just want you to know, I appreciate that and we will look into it.
Thank you. Like councilmember Fear mentioned, if you, if you put in a 311 request or email us, we're usually able to resolve it. Maybe not take care of it the next day or the same day, but we'll be out there to take action within, within a day and get it moving.
I too want to commend you on what you've gotten done, but I just think, I appreciate Joshua bringing you here, and when you said Joshua offered you something, I thought, what did he bring, what did he offer you to get you to Hamilton? Because with what you've done with River's Edge, I mean, you took a nothing to let's develop it and what a success it was. And, and. And, and the Quick Strike Team really started because Rob Wild and I bitched about people that were putting the traffic, the landlords, tenants, and Joshua said, we're getting it all picked up. So what, what everything has evolved with to this point was how it started. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a, it's a work in progress. Like we're not ready to just kick, kick back and relax. Like we're, we're going to do more and make it better.
Any other comments? I think they spoke for us to council. How much we appreciate your leadership and effort.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you, Sam.
Next up will be agenda item number two, presented by Tamika Heddington of, of the finance department.
Good evening. So in March of 2021, the city received home American Rescue Plan funds for, specifically for the home investment partnership program. I know that sounds totally confusing, but basically it's American Rescue Plan funds under the form of home, which we've had regular entitlement funds under, under home before. But these are different because these are specifically geared towards the homeless and persons at risk of homelessness. The amount allocated by HUD was $1,400,858. We had a couple of public meetings as well as released a survey and just spoke to a number of sub-receipients as well as stakeholders that deal with housing and supporting those who are homeless or receiving local services. And through that feedback, we have decided to propose projects related to the production of rental housing, family rental assistance, total operating expenses, and to cover some administration costs. The rental housing will be done through Neighborhood Housing Services and you'll see the three different projects there along with the proposed addresses. And through Family Promise, we'll be doing a family rental assistance program. Well, they will. We're just supporting them. They'll be doing a family rental assistance program. And if I'm not mistaken, the goal is to do 20 or 25 rental assistance payments to, payments directly to families to help them stabilize housing, permanent housing. Pretty simple, especially for home because it's normally really complicated. Any questions?
Thank you for helping us get to what could be a solution or closer to one.
No problem.
Thank you. Any questions?
That's great.
Next up for agenda item number three, which is related to the Hamilton Indian Springs JED, we'll have our city manager Joshua Smith presenting.
I might be able to add some contact to this, Daniel.
Okay, that's fine.
So this actually will be the fourth JED with Fairfield Township. The area in green there is along Princeton Road where Bridgewater Church across from the Frisces and the Arby's is. The split will be 25% Hamilton. The income tax revenue split will be 25% Hamilton, 75% Fairfield Township. Like I said, this will be our fourth JED. We also have JED 1, to kind of give you guys some more flavor behind this. JED 1 is the Menards, Coles, Walmart area. That brings in about $545,000 a year. That's 75% Hamilton, 25% Fairfield Township. JED 2, that's that Bridgewater Mall area. That's bringing in about 535,000 and this is grand total. This is not Hamilton share. But the JED 2 is 25% Hamilton and 75% to Hamilton. We have the third JED, which is where Story Point is and the new firehouse that Fairfield Township built. That brings in about 70,000. That's a 50/50 split. And like I said, this will be our fourth JED. I don't know if you guys got any more questions on that?
Any questions? Really good presentation. Thank you for that.
Active city manager.
Number four, I guess?
Yep, just making sure I have it. Yep. So next up for items four and five, we'll have our director of business services, Nate Perry.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thanks for having me here tonight. The first item that we have for you is an amendment to our existing agreement with 80 Acres. So the existing agreement was approved in October of 2018. And really their, their growth and site plan has changed quite significantly since they, they started their building in 2018. So they're operating in three of the five original facilities that they had planned to build under the original agreement. But also they have one unplanned location at our Hanover distribution facility that wasn't really anticipated in the original agreement. So they're operating in four locations here in Hamilton. They're also our second largest utility users. They've grown to be our second largest energy user. They're, they're kind of the first largest from a peak demand standpoint. So they're, they're using a considerable amount of energy. And also that, that energy load has exceeded what they originally anticipated for those three original facilities. They're using quite a bit more energy than what they had originally anticipated. So Joshua Edwin and I have been meeting with them over the last few months, talking about their growth, their growth plans, where they're at, and we're proposing restructuring their agreement. And really it's, it's taking the remaining three years of their current agreement and allowing for, for that benefit to occur in 2023. So due to how they've expanded in excess of what they're doing, we're advancing that, that benefit into 2023. And really that, that helps support 80 Acres growth and expansion, but as with all of our economic development agreements, continued growth from an electric standpoint and from an employment standpoint helps our entire community as a whole. And the next one is a change to our water fire line rates. Council recently considered some water rate changes. This is really just a cleanup of our ordinances. Our, our water rates for our typical retail customers are included in one section. The fire line rates are included in another. So the goal here is really to put all of our water-related charges and fees into one section. So we're consolidating the ordinances, making it more easy for our, our customers to go to one spot to see all the charges related to fire lines. So we're not changing any provisions. We're not changing any of the rates that were previously approved. We're just consolidating it into one section.
Questions or comments? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
For items six and seven, which are related to liquor permits, I'll be handling those presentations.
So as I mentioned, items six and seven are liquor permit transfers within the city of Hamilton. So I'll provide a short summary about why we receive them and which ones we've received. So the city receives liquor permit applications. These are either new permits for new operators or transfers in between permit holders. Though how revised code provides the city of Hamilton as a legislative authority, the opportunity to object to these applications, these are typically through the city's fire, building, and health departments. And for both of these applications, the staff has reviewed these applications. There are no objections. So it's staff's recommendation that city council not object to these applications, which is founded, found within your caucus reports. So the first application is a transfer, a transfer between Marie Investments LLC to Eastside Properties LLC. This is for the High Street Food Mart located on 946 High Street. These specific permit applications deal with C1 and C2 liquor permits, or which are for prepackaged beer and wine sales to be consumed off premises, as well as a D6 permit, which is to allow sales on Sundays. The second permit application is a transfer between P-Dub's Entertainment LLC to Rocky Fields LLC. This is for the Dayton Lane Pub located on 1103 Dayton Street. These are for, these applications are D1, D2, D3, D3A, and D6 permits. So D1, 2, and 3 are permits for, for beer, wine, and liquor sales to be consumed on premises, like, you know, as you would at a normal bar. The D3A is a special permit that allows sales to go to 2:30 in the morning and D6 allows liquor permits, or liquor to be sold on Sundays. So this is actually identical to a permit that we had no objections to last year, but we just received this recently and we're following the process. So do we have any questions about either of these items? Okay, that's a summation of my report. I will move it on to the next one.
Lastly, on our caucus agenda, we have item number eight, which is request to waive advertising for a purchase for the public safety department. That presentation will be done by our fire chief, Chief Mercer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. What we're asking for with this caucus agenda item is to waive the advertising for this purchase. The fire department, most, much of the equipment that we use is proprietary and single source, as is the case with this piece of equipment. To waive the, waive the purchasing or the advertising saves cost, saves time, and is efficient for our citizens, provides good equipment for our people, and the best that we can do for the people we work for. Anything?
Makes sense.
All right. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our presentations, Mayor.
You all accept the motion. Let the committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second. Much may council member Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:04. Off with the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. Much may council member Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay, so go back into regular meeting at 7:04. Now, accept the motion regarding the reports of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion with the exception of the item so noted, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concurring the recommendations.
Second.
Much may councilmember Pullman, seconded by councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to the public hearing section of this meeting. Accept the motion, the regular meeting be recessed, and the following public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second. Much may councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:05. We'll now go into the first public hearing, agenda item number nine.
A public hearing regarding a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 annual action plan. This plan includes recommended budgeting of remaining CDBG funds from fiscal year 16 through 17, fiscal year 17 through 18, fiscal year 18 through 19, fiscal year 19 through 20, fiscal year 20 through 21, fiscal year 22 through 23, up to $498,880.76 for site acquisition, $69,838.04 for public facilities and improvements, and $43,671.42 for housing administration and activities.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving this substantial amendment to the TDB annual action plan? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard? I believe Tamika signed the book, but I believe that she also, oh, you did not sign the book. Okay.
I signed it for her. I thought she was presenting. That's my fault.
Don't worry.
Do you want to?
It was alluded to in her presentation before, but if you just want to make any kind of brief comments about it, then we'll go to the audience, everybody else.
Sure. Okay, so as stated, this is substantial amendment, different from the amendment that I just spoke about a few minutes ago because those funds were just for home ARP. These are different funds. As you can tell, they're from many previous fiscal years. It was an accumulation of unexpendited funds from other projects that we are now able to reallocate for the site acquisition. Oh, here we go. The, the following projects. Again, it's basically, it's just the Living Waters HBAC improvements, the fire station site acquisition, and then as well as the different administration costs that you see there down at the bottom. Other than that, it's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving this amendment? Hey, anyone on council wish to be heard, wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. Councilmember Nab, seconded by, I believe, Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. That public hearing is closed at 7:08. Next public hearing, please.
A public hearing regarding amending the city of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of 625 New London Road, parcel number P64121560004, from R1 Single Family Residence to BPD Business Plan Development and approving and confirming the final plan development PD for the Stephen T. Baden High School for proposed parking expansion.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this particular change of zoning and approving and confirming a final plan development?
I'm Etta Reed with Bear Becker. I'm here on behalf of Baden High School in the Archdiocese of Cincinnati. With me also is Brian Pennergass, the president of Baden High School. If you would have any questions for him. I just wanted to let you know we are here if you have any questions. We made some great improvements to the plan since we were before you before with the preliminary approval. We've, we're comfortable with all the comments that staff has made and we're looking forward to progressing with this project.
Any questions or comments at this point in time? If not, anyone else in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing? Anyone on council wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Much may councilmember Fear, seconded by councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:10. Next public hearing, please.
A public hearing regarding changes to the Hamilton zoning ordinance per second round yearly review of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving changes to the Hamilton zoning ordinance? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing at all? Anyone on council wish to be heard, wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Pullman.
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed.
Second. Councilmember Pullman, seconded by councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:11. It's unsafe as far as signing the public book for each one of those public hearings. No one else has signed a book except those who actually have spoken. I don't think anybody signed a book on the Baden one or on number 11 as well. So we go, next public hearing, please.
A public hearing regarding a new plan development request and specific use request located at 108 North Brookwood Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, to construct a new drive-through restaurant called Star Chili.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving this new plan development project, Gold Star Chili Restaurant? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this time? No one signed a book. Anyone on council wish to be heard or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. The councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:12. We now go to the next public hearing, please.
A public hearing regarding a preliminary and final plan development located at 850 South Erie Boulevard, Hamilton, Ohio, to allow the reconstruction and occupation of the building as a new taproom, brew pub, production brewery, and distribution. the building as a new taproom, brew pub, production brewery and distribution.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving this preliminary and final plan development, uh, 850 South Erie Boulevard? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving that topic? Anyone on, nobody else, nobody at all signed the, uh, public hearing book? Anyone on council wish to make a motion or wish to be heard at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ryan, seconded by council member Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried and it's seven twelve. Next public hearing, please.
A public hearing regarding a preliminary plan, excuse me, a preliminary development plan request located at 116 Timber Hill Drive, Hamilton, Ohio, to allow property to be developed as nine separate lots as a mixture of two and three family dwelling units with designated 20% open space and three waivers from the Hamilton zoning ordinance.
Anyone on, the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving this preliminary development plan, Timber Hill Drive? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this particular public hearing? Hey, no one signed the public hearing book? Anyone on council wish to, uh, make comment or make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fear?
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion made by council member Fear, seconded by council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. The public hearing is closed at seven thirteen. Off set the motion, the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by council member Pullman, seconded by council member Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items. And now accept the motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Much more council member Nab, seconded by council member Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to new legislation, number fifteen, two readings of an ordinance involving community development block grants.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton's substantial amendment annual action plan update for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant funds, and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The City of Hamilton applicant to, to amend and, uh, transfer inappropriate up to fiscal year 2016 through 2017, fiscal year 2017 through 2018, fiscal year 2018 through 2019, fiscal year 2019 through 2020, fiscal year 2020 through 2021, fiscal year 2021 through 2022, fiscal year 2022 through 2023, CDBG budgets up to $498,880.76 for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 site acquisition, up to $69,838.04 for public facilities and improvements, and up to $43,671.62 for housing activities, first reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title?
Second. Much more council member Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Okay, second reading of that motion, please, or that ordinance, I'm sorry.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton's substantial amendment annual action plan update for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant funds, and authorizing submit, the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The, the City of Hamilton applicant to amend, transfer inappropriate up to fiscal year 2020, excuse me, fiscal year 2016 through 2017, fiscal year 2017 through 2018, fiscal year 2018 through 2019, fiscal year 2019 through 2020, fiscal year 2020 through 2021, fiscal year 2021 through 2022, fiscal year 2022 through 2023, CDBG budgets up to $498,880.76 for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 site acquisition, up to $69,838.04 for public facilities and improvements, and up to $43,671.62 for housing activities, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Much more council member Pullman, seconded by council member Vaughn. Any discussion, questions on this particular ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
Okay, we now go to agenda item number sixteen, first reading of an ordinance involving preliminary development plan, Timber Hill Drive.
An ordinance approving the preliminary, preliminary development plan for 116 Timber Hill Drive to allow the property to be developed as nine separate lots as a mixture of two and three family dwelling units with designated 20% open space and three waivers to the Hamilton zoning ordinance. Jay Chris Miller, applicant, first reading.
Okay, go to agenda item number seventeen, which is a first reading of an ordinance involving preliminary and final plan development for North Brookwood Avenue, Gold Star.
An ordinance approving the preliminary and final development plan, uh, excuse me, the preliminary and final development and specific use for 180, 108 North Brookwood Avenue to allow the drive-through restaurant, Gold Star Chili. Steve Schlagbaum, GSR Brands applicant, first reading.
Here we go to agenda item number eighteen, also a first reading of an ordinance changing the zoning and approving now and confirming a final plan development.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ord, uh, amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number seven five zero three by changing the zoning of 625 New London Road, parcel number P six four one two one five six zero 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 four, from R one, single family residence to BPD business plan development, and approving and confirming the final development plan for the Stephen T. Baden High School for a proposed parking expansion. Etta Reed, professional engineer for Stephen T. Baden High School, applicant, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number nineteen, first reading of an ordinance involving amending the City of Hamilton zoning.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number seven five zero three by amending several sections, section, uh, one two five zero zoning land use chart, section one three zero zero conditional uses, section one four zero zero accessory uses, section one five zero zero land area setback and, and density standards, section one six zero zero off-street parking, section one seven zero zero signs, section, uh, one eight zero zero resident, uh, essential design standards, section one nine zero zero commercial design standards, section two four zero zero plan development PD regulations, section three five zero zero mobile food service operations, section three nine zero zero glossary, section four zero 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 administration enforcement, section four one zero zero border zoning appeals, section four two zero zero, uh, border zoning appeals, powers and duty, power and duties, section four five zero zero fee schedule, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number twenty, first reading of ordinance involving vacation of portion of South Monument Avenue.
An ordinance, uh, an ordinance to vacate a portion of right-of-way named South Monument Avenue located between High Street and Core Street situated in the second ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Go to agenda item number twenty-one, two readings of emergency ordinance involving a purchase agreement to 126 North C Street.
Emergency, an emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale, a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 126 North C Street, Hamilton, Ohio, parcel number P six four one one zero zero seven zero 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 six three, Norman, a jolly seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move that the rules be suspended, said ordinance be read a second time by its title?
Second.
Motion made by council member Nab, seconded by council member Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Second reading of emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 126 North C Street, Hamilton, Ohio, parcel number P six four one one zero seven zero 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 six three, Norman, a jolly seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Motion made by council member Nab, seconded by council member Vaughn. Any discussion, questions, comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number twenty-two, first reading of an ordinance involving a perimeter and final development plan, 850 South Erie Boulevard.
An ordinance approving the preliminary and final development plan for 850 South Erie Boulevard pertaining to allow the reconstruction and occupation of the existing building as a new taproom, brew pub, production brewery and brewery production, with one variance to section two four zero six E two, BPD design standards to allow overhead service stores on facades facing a public street. A50 Associates LLC applicant, first reading.
Thank you, that's an ordinance approving a preliminary and final development plan as well as one variance in there. We go to agenda item number twenty-three, two readings of an ordinance relating to imposing a late fee in relation to tobacco retail license renewals.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending section one seven eight three point zero four license required of chapter, it's one seven eight three, cigarette and tobacco vendors, sales to persons under 21 tobacco retailer license relating to tobacco retail license renewal application, and adding authorization to impose a late fee, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title?
Second. Much more council member Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote on that, please.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
A second reading of that ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, by amending section one seven eight three point zero four license required of chapter one seven eight three cigarette and tobacco vendors, sales to persons under 21 tobacco retailer license relating to tobacco retail license renewal application, and adding authorization to impose a late fee, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted?
Second.
Much more council member Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan?
Mr. Moller?
Please comment.
I have some troubles with this, um, as data continues to come in on the usage, usage of vaping amongst the, our youth population. Um, I believe that our, that our staff is currently enforcing, uh, the regulations on these shops very well. Um, I think we've done a pretty good job of it. However, as the data continues to indicate that youth usage is, continues to rise, as we looking into this issue in the future, I would like to see more policing in addressing these vape shops that when they are, uh, in regards to acting responsibly amongst our youth, um, I would like to see this, um, would just like to encourage our staff to continue policing this. They're doing a good job. However, this is, there are some that may not act responsibly, and I would hope that we could continue to enforce some of our regulations.
Yes.
Okay, there's better.
Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna state that, um, this, I don't see anybody on, on staff from the health department, uh, or otherwise I would defer to them, but, uh, related to this, uh, ordinance, um, the enforcement under this hasn't started yet, um, and so this, this program is gonna roll out this March, uh, and so in advance of that, um, program rolling out, uh, they're, they're getting this language in related to the renewal, uh, which will be, um, starting in, in March of 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments about, about this? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Mayor, do we get it? I need a motion in a second, unless I've already.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Ryan already did.
Heard a Pullman and Ryan for the motion to suspend the rules. Did I miss something for the ordinance being adopted?
I already asked that, maybe, did I already ask that you guys?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we already did that.
Okay. Ready to roll then.
Okay. Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number twenty-four, first reading of ordinance involving a permanent utility easement, Tyler'sville Road.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase of a, a purchase of a permanent utility easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, Tyler'sville Road, property address seven five, seven five Gilmore Road, first reading.
Go to agenda item number twenty-five, which is first reading of an ordinance also involving purchase of a permanent utility easement, Tyler'sville Road.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase of a permanent utility easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, Tyler'sville Road, property address seven five 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 Gilmore Road, first reading.
Here we go to agenda item number twenty-six, first reading of an ordinance involving a purchase of a temporary easement, Tyler'sville Road.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase of a temporary easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, two nine seven nine Tyler'sville Road, first reading.
Go to agenda item number twenty-seven, first reading of an ordinance involving a temporary easement, Tyler'sville Road.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to, manager to execute a purchase of a temporary easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, Tyler'sville Road, part lot number two seven one two zero P T N E C O R, first reading.
Here we go to a agenda item number twenty-eight, first reading of an ordinance involving a temporary easement, Tyler'sville Road.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a purchase of a temporary easement located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, three one seven zero, Tyler'sville Road, first reading.
Go to agenda item number twenty-nine, resolution involving agreement between the City of Hamilton and the Animal Friends Humane Society.
A resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and Animal Friends Humane Society relative to the impoundment of animals relinquished and found, running at large within the corporate limits of the City of Hamilton, Ohio.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion or comments on this one? Any discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
We now go to the audience of the city manager, or Dave Jones? Is there any thing that the city manager wants to say, or Dave Jones? Or anybody? Okay. Audience of the city council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I just want to say I had an opportunity today to attend the celebrating self-lunch at the Fitton Center. I don't know how many people were here, but Tisha Livingston from 80 Acres did an amazing presentation. I sat at a table where no one was from Hamilton, and I can't tell you how many compliments I got about the city, which made me really proud. But I will say that Joshua Smith, I think you need to run for president. They gave you so many kudos about why they came to Hamilton, and it really is attributed to all of our leadership in the city. This company could have gone anywhere. But when someone, in particular Joshua Smith, said, "We want you," they jumped at the chance and said it could have been anywhere, but that hadn't happened to them. And now look at what we have. And they, she said it so many times, "Thank you to the City of Hamilton for your collaboration, your work." And I'm telling you, people were chatting it up. There were lots of questions and just so many compliments. So I say thanks to our city staff for what's been accomplished, because it was wonderful. I was very proud to be there today.
Dee, was that the TV Hamilton video then? Maybe some clips of that being put out would be really, really cool.
There's a great presentation about how it all works, because I don't think people understand. So it's from planting the seed to harvesting to getting it into the groceries. It was great.
Thank you for that. Anybody else on council?
Mr. Mayor, I do, Susan, we all, our work with Seventeen Strong. And the annual breakfast is going to be coming up. It's going to be at the freshman school on Saturday morning, January the 21st. It is a signup event online. You, you may do that, and, and things, we're expecting about 200 people at the event for the morning of, of Saturday morning. It'll be starting, I believe, at 9:30. And signups from anywhere from around 9 o'clock on to sign in and, and get your name badge and things like that. But please go online. It is on our Seventeen Strong website. You're certainly invited to attend. There will be awards and presentations by many people here that are with us this evening, as well as the team members from Seventeen Strong that'll be presenting that morning. So again, if you'll take a look at it in the Seventeen Strong website, you're more than welcome to attend. Thanks very much.
At no cost.
Exactly.